Stand by. Okay. Let us know when you are. Yes. Okay. Jamie?
He advised that properties had been given by the township council in accordance with the Sunshine Mall in the following manner. Units advertised in the Thrillington Times and Camden Courier-Post on January 11, 2017, and Huso and the Walton Board on the same date. Mr. Varell?
Here.
Mrs. Clody?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz? Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Mr. Ketchum?
Here. So before we jump into the action portion, Mike Schwartz said he knows at the beginning he has the flu, and while he could have gotten here for our own protection, he said, "You don't want what I have." So he will not be joining us this evening. So first, we have some resolutions to take care of. First is Resolution 2017-217, approving a totally disabled veteran exemption for Block 72, Lot 3.
Still move.
Second.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next, we have Resolution 2017-218. This is approving another totally disabled veteran exemption for Block 98, Lot 3.
Still move.
Second.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. And finally, we have Resolution 2017-219. This is authorizing the executive session to discuss litigation for the NJAW tax appeal, the potential litigation for the vacant properties fees, and CWA contract negotiation.
I'll make that move.
Second.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. So we have a pretty lengthy agenda here today, and I just ask that everybody try to keep that in mind as we move forward, because we have a lot to cover tonight. So first is the co-properties that Jerry has indicated need some repairs. There are properties, we own them, if we're going to try and sell them on the market, we probably should maintain them. My only concern in reading the information is, you know, there's no problem with where we get the money from what line item in order to make those repairs, Jeff or Brian?
Correct.
Correct. So we can just make these repairs, repair the property. It's our property. Hopefully, it'll increase the resale price if we can sell it. Right now, it seems that, you know, that you just can't sell them unless they're in at least a certain level of maintenance. So.
After we, if you authorize this, the next step, you know, the labor meetings is we're going to talk to you about the possibility of getting a realtor to market them, because it has New Jersey Housing Worries and Finance has been marketing with the other properties, and it really hasn't gone anywhere. So if we want to get rid of them, and we're paying condo fees on the three of them, so it's taking money out of the CO funds, we're going to have to get a little bit more aggressive. And this is step one, is to, you know, we took these properties over, and some of them were in bad shape, and this is just to bring them up to a passable, so that when they're shown they're at least comparable to other units that are over there being shown to them.
Off the top of my head, I cannot recall the exact names, but I know there's a couple of entities that actually, they, their housing folks say do a good job on selling units. I can make sure I send those over to you.
Good. Good. So we're, everyone's okay? I'll see you.
Yeah, just, Jeff, one question.
Yes.
You have a price in there from Jerry for about five grand. Can you update us if the number is high or lower?
Yeah, it'll be below five.
It will?
Yeah.
It seems to be one of the most.
But I will update you on what the final number, what the final number is.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, is a potential shared service agreement. This is for the brining equipment, the brine tank to refill our brine machine, which we don't have, correct?
We have one on order.
A tank?
Yes.
Okay.
We do not have a storage tank, correct?
Oh, okay. So what we're looking to share with them is something that we have on order, or we don't have in the?
No, we do not have a storage tank. We have, we have a truck that's going to have a brine tank on it, but not storing for, you know, like a gasoline tank. That's what the shared service with Willingboro would allow us to share a number of other items, but really, the only item we're looking at at this time is we'll take deliveries of brine, and we'll purchase the brine from them. And we just need to do the shared service in order to make that happen.
Right. Improve that brine issue.
Right, right. I remember that. So anybody have any questions about that?
In particular, it's great.
Part two of this. My concern is, although you can't tell from today's weather, is that by the time we get to the, do we do this tonight? Or does this have to wait till a public meeting? This is not really spending money. My concern is, what if we get a freak snowstorm and we need it?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have everything in place to use this, but I mean, if you're willing to authorize it tonight, I don't see any reason why you couldn't do it.
I agree.
Anybody have a, and I'm just.
No, I think your points were taken. You get a storm.
We get a storm, we're going to be scrambled.
We're waiting to do this in January.
That'd be, that'd be great.
So we've had an opportunity in the packet to read the legal gobbledygook that is closed here. So I'm assuming that legal counsel's had a chance to review this, and if we authorize it before, obviously, it goes to be signed. If there's any questions, you'll bring them to our attention. So what do we need to do here? A motion?
We need a motion.
And this would be, this is, is a resolution to execute this?
To authorize execution of the agreement.
Okay. So.
There's a question. What is Schedule A of due for if we're only looking at a brine?
They included, this is their standard agreement. Other towns do share other services with them, and the only one we're looking for really is the brine.
Right. Thanks.
But it's just one of the other items that they offer. There are a couple of towns around us that do engage in some of these other items.
Okay. Thank you.
But when we sign, when we give permission for this, let's say we needed one of these things, we would be able to?
Correct.
Okay.
Great. Okay. So we need, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the execution of the master public works shared service agreement for sharing public works, equipment, and personnel between Delray Township and the Township of Willingboro, as described in our package. And that would be Resolution Number 2017-220.
Still move.
I'll second.
We need a voice or a roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Varell?
Aye.
Mrs. Clody?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next is the vegetation management work that PSENG is describing. This seems pretty cut and dried. They're going to remove all incompatible trees. I'm not sure what that means, but I'm guessing those trees that they don't feel are compatible?
Any tree that might impact the lines, right, nor the right-of-way of the high-tension wires. They do this every couple of years. Most of the residents are aware when they see them that they're, that's what they're in the area of. So it includes a couple of trees of ours that I indicated a couple of weeks back, or might have been a couple of months now, that we have some dead trees off the right way that they're going to remove for us, and they're charged to.
Okay. So this is, this is kind of just an.
Just for information purposes, that if you get any calls in January, seeing them in the, right-of-way in the high-tension wires, then that's what they're up to.
We won't have any problems with the side trim of all branches originating from, in other words, branches that come from other properties, ours or?
Every once in a while, we do get calls from the residents, but they have that right.
Okay. As long as they have the right to do it, then we're good. Good. Next is the Fairview Boulevard curb island removal. We asked Jim to give us kind of a quote or an estimate as what this would cost, and he has, and it doesn't seem like it's a whole lot of money. I think it impacts a ton of residents that this would be what we jokingly refer to as Marrow Island. The traffic calming or steering, I'm not sure what that would be called, in between Shopright and Chick-fil-A, so to speak, that inhibits you from getting into the two-turn lanes until you pass a certain point. But the cars tend to queue up way back because it's single-file until you can break into three or four. And if we remove the island and just stripe it, then they can start queuing up for that turn much earlier, and should help, I would think, alleviate some of that backlog in the morning, especially in the morning when people are going to work, and I guess in the afternoon when they're returning. What do you, anything yet?
At this point in time, we're just doing, or providing it for your information, and it'll be brought back up when you discuss the capital budget in 2018, but.
Okay.
Since you had asked for it, wanted to make sure that you had it in front of you.
Right. Looks like the total ballpark in the $90,000, that's the kind of project that really, I think, creates a lot of bang for the buck. It's going to impact a lot of people. So that's good. Next, we have the Office 360 email. I didn't read every detail here, but I did read the points that I was hunting to make sure it needed to be covered in this. For those folks who are not familiar, so 360 is kind of cloud-based email. So, okay, so Patty gave me the look. So let's just say that rather than all the emails storing up on your personal computer, they're accessible from the Internet, okay? So it also means that there would be a backup. We would eliminate any issues with Oprah requests. You know, if someone looks for an email, a specific email, it keeps a backup of every email. Hopefully, it will also eliminate any issues we've been having with storage, because it's storing, I don't know, I don't remember off the top of my head, what the storage for each individual mailbox was, or if it was kind of a joint situation, but it'll keep every email. So we won't have to worry about inadvertently deleting an email going forward. The one thing that, as you all know, my love of technology, the other thing that I was concerned with is the backing up of what's currently there. So in the, on the third, well, on the second page of the proposal, they talk about using Sidekick for a backup, and that's just simply an email program that would go and get all the old emails and migrate them to the new system.
Let me ask you a question. Where do we get this company?
This is the company that has the contract for it right now.
So, that's a good question, Ken, because I asked the same question. This is the company that we, when you had that used, that was called?
United.
United, was bought by these folks?
Correct.
So they kind of, a bigger group bought them out. And.
So I just went through this at my housing authority, and the price is pretty steep here. I was just wondering, and then the other thing is, I noticed, it says, please note that, and it's asterisk, that the estimated total doesn't include tax or shipping. I don't know what that means, but it's almost close to 17.5. And if this, if this tax and shipping is included in that, are we close to 17.5? Do we have to go out and bid on this?
So.
No?
We're nowhere near, we're no.
Seventeen five's.
Seventeen five is not our bid threshold. I'm a qualified processing agent.
Oh, you are qualified?
Yeah, ours is close to 40.
So I don't know how many users you have in the location. I don't mean, you know, I mean, email users.
No, you got it.
So, so.
This is my idea, yeah.
This is 66 users. That includes the police, and I know the police have special needs, and the police have their own vendor. They did address this in their comments, that they would need to, the police would need to contact that plus to have them either assist in the migration or some deal worked out.
Jeff, I have a question.
Yeah, we're not looking to do this this year. It was just to bring to your attention, it'll be in the 2018 budget request, but it's something that I personally think is a priority because of the way our emails are handled and backed up, that we need to go in this direction.
Yes.
Yeah, just, so, like what Gary said, I couldn't find it here. Is it unlimited space, or is it just that, like, how does that work?
It has it, I'll get that information, but basically, it's almost unlimited.
So we don't have to, they're like, add space, these are just.
Correct.
And there's no price yield for that?
No.
So.
I'll get that and write it.
The only other thing that I would, Jeff, I'll, I'll look back at you. They're talking about modifying both the, I'm going to talk geek to everybody now, the A record and the MX record, which is nothing more than the, where the URL point, so, how do I say that in English? So are they talking about taking the hosting services off of our current host?
Yes.
Okay. So we just need to talk to them about managing that, as, right now, you and I manage that so that there's no employees added, and email addresses have to be added, or additional space needs, obviously, additional space shouldn't be an issue, but we need to know who's responsible for that, and if they'll do some sort of a training for you if you're going to be managing that.
I can give it to you, mate.
Well, I didn't want to say you specifically, because it's always you, but you. So this is for the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, very. Part of it is to develop some questions, so that you are all comfortable with it once you see it the next time. So any other questions you have between now and the next month or so, let me know.
Okay. Jeff, I'm going to ask you to explain this one, because I read it a couple of times, and I'm still not exactly sure what is the deal here.
All right. We're talking about, let me preface it by saying we're talking about $40, and I don't mean that in a good way, that we should do it. I mean, we're talking about $40.
Yeah.
This individual, this resident wanted this brought before council concerning a late payment and interest as a result of, they attempted to pay electronically to a bank. The bank says that they sent the check. We have no, no information or anything that says that the check ever got here, and it didn't get here, didn't get put on the account, and so, and it was sent at a fairly late date in the process. Our tax office indicated that oftentimes, when they, somebody's making a payment through a bank, sometimes it takes 10 days before it's delivered here, and the person wants the interest waived. We don't think it, we don't think it should be waived. You start doing this, this is, you know, it's not something that we want to start doing, and I think with everybody who does electronic payments is, we have nothing to indicate that it got here on time, and it's just somebody asking to waive interest, and quite frankly, we get these, get quite few of these. It's just the residents insistent on bringing it before council to ask you for determination. And it's $40.76.
Yeah, she had actually emailed me, and I had told her that there was a process to be followed, and that's what we basically asked her to do, she came in to bring it to council.
Has she ever been late before?
No, no, honestly, no.
No, I don't know whether you should judge that, but.
Jeff, it was sent, like, the bank cut the check and then mailed it, or is it just completely electronically? Is that, there's two, either or. That's what I'm confused.
It was determined the check was sent.
She would need, she would need to know what the account to deposit, it would have to be by check.
Yeah.
Because you have to.
The bank sent a check.
Yeah.
With my daycare, I do that. My bank sends a check, but they're always late.
But what I talked to you about.
They say it's supposed to be here by this point, their daycare's like, it's five days later, or.
What I talked to you about this, I asked you if we should reach out to her maybe to see if we had some evidence from the bank that they actually transferred. Did we ever go back to her and?
She's saying that, quite frank, the bank says they sent it. That's the evidence.
Was she also?
We didn't receive it, so.
No.
It was a bottom line.
She says that she has documentation.
That's right.
That was drawn, withdrawn from her.
Well, no, when that, she, she says that if you'd like to see the documentation, I think that's what we need to see.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me get it clear. If the bank shows you documentation that they sent the check, but we didn't receive it, you're going to waive interest every time that happens? I mean, that's what the real question is, because it happens a lot where they come in late, and the resident says, "I sent, you know, I sent this to the bank on time," and we're talking about something at, you know, October 20th. I mean, you're opening a can of worms, let's put it that way. There's nothing that's going to prove that we received the check from that bank. And I can show you in the tax office, a pile of letters to get returned from the post office that hot, every quarter, that the post office doesn't deliver, that the post office can't find. I mean, it's, you're, just telling you, you're opening up a can of worms with this.
So let me ask you a question. If the post office doesn't deliver with these situations, I know it's opening up the thing, but how about if we were to say to her, okay, this, I'll say we do it, but if we were to say to an individual, okay, this time, you know, you have a waiver, but from now on, if you try to do electronic, it's your risk, you know what I'm saying?
It's already her risk.
I understand that, but it's the bank, right?
So, so, if she's, if she's saying that in the appropriate time, before it would be a penalty, that she engaged the bank to send the check, they say they sent it.
Right.
But it never arrived, and they canceled it and put the money back, wouldn't there be it coming out of her account and some record of them sending it?
It doesn't come out of the account until you cash it.
Right.
That's what we, I thought about. She probably gets an email or something like I do, that they mailed it.
But she says here, on August 24th, and the payment will, she said, "I have documentation from my bank that the payment was sent on August 24th, and the payment was withdrawn from my account."
Yeah, so the bank withdrew.
So the bank withdrew.
But according to what?
But there's no evidence.
It depends which.
That's a way, eschramatical there, like, it was withdrawn from the account, but not on the 24th.
I am, wasn't.
Or maybe she, I don't know, that's what she said.
So certain banks canceled the check.
You should say it was mailed, the bank said it mailed on the 24th break, and it was eventually cashed, or it was cashed, like, I don't think they withdrew the money from their account, I don't know, maybe you can clarify.
Well, if she says, "Payment was withdrawn from my account," that, that says to me, based on your scenario, that, you know, if they don't withdraw it until it's cashed, you know, did somebody else cash it?
If the check wasn't cashed, the money wasn't withdrawn.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you can, certain banks, you can set it where, you know, wait to do it till later, or you can apply it so when you hit send check, it deducts the amount from your balance, you know, it's not actually.
I gotta, I gotta move it to the 21st century.
You know what I'm saying? Like, you could. I mean, it's not actually out, it just shows you that you spent it for your, so I don't.
So is this the bank's fault, or the one, it's the bank?
We don't have any idea who's.
Bank or the post office?
Yeah, it could be the bank or the post office, really.
Oh, well, that's, I was trying to figure out what the stack of papers was.
It would be the same thing if you mailed the check, it could be your fault or the post office.
And I'm not saying it, I mean, I've never seen a check laying around on the floor in the tax office.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, I.
So she's indicating that it was sent. We're indicating we didn't receive it.
She's saying it was sent, the bank says it was sent.
If the bank can prove it was sent, I think that that's, that she's done her due diligence. I told the bank to send it, here's where they proved they sent it.
But how can they prove that? How did the bank prove they sent it? What's to prove?
They have to have a paper trail.
Not that they sent it, that we received it.
Right.
No, no.
If this was PTO or Comcast?
Yeah.
It would just be hell.
Okay.
But I mean, how do you prove you sent it, other than just say the check date and the date that the check was issued? I mean, that doesn't really prove you sent it.
If I understand it, this isn't an electronic transfer. This is for requesting the bank to send a physical check.
The bank sends a check and sends it on.
So all they're going to be able to show is the check date and the check number. They're not going to be able to actually show us that they mailed that check.
Right.
Although they would, if they say, well, no.
Well, could the woman appeal to the bank?
Well, she talks about it being redeposited. Wouldn't there be a record if it?
I think you're right about it.
She has recourse with the bank, right?
As they send it.
She could ask the bank, which is not asking the banks, she's asking you guys.
Well, why don't we tell her to ask the bank?
Because we put on the, because we put on the penalty.
The bottom line is that it was, it was sent, it's because we received it, how it, from the bank to here, it didn't get here, you know, so it doesn't, they can prove that they sent it, clearly, just, just because she's documentation.
They can prove that they issued a check.
You proved that a check was issued.
Not that they sent it.
Yeah, that's true.
But could she say, "We lost the check"?
Sure.
That's what she thinks. I'm going to get a receipt.
Again, if I send a check to somebody and they, and they don't receive it, they're not going to give my interest back because it's late. I mean, this is, I'm just telling you, this isn't done.
Okay.
This is usually not done, because you're opening a can of worms with every single person who pays this way, that it, I think, I sent it to the bank.
Really?
Does, you've had two or three in the last couple of months that you've said no to them, but, not in the last couple of months, but, I mean, tax offices don't usually, just like any other bill collector, if you send your check in and it gets lost and it's late, do they waive the interest for you? They don't.
That's true.
Doesn't happen.
That's true. So it sounds like she has recourse with the bank, if the bank says, "We sent it and it never, it never cashed," and they showed the money back. Did she not get notice? What, did she not get notice that the money went back?
She says that it was re-deposited to her account.
So what, what is the?
Says they was determined that the check was sent, but not cashed, and the bank canceled the check and re-deposited the money into my account.
So what, what is the due date that she was trying to make?
Well, she was trying to do it.
Sounds like it never arrived, which means that the bank screwed up.
Or it got delivered somewhere else, via mailbox.
Yeah, but even if it got delivered somewhere else, it would have been born back.
Your fault.
For them to credit the back, how would they know to credit the back if they didn't get the check back?
Avoid that.
So somehow, the bank would have to know it was refunded back.
They just know it wasn't. They canceled.
Yeah, because it's not.
She passed it.
It probably has one of those.
Yeah, she could have canceled it.
Avoid it in 30 days or something.
Jeff, I understand your point about opening up a can of worms, but I pay my bills by mail, and I usually send a bill out seven days before it's due.
So do I.
So August 24th, if it was due September 1st?
No, no, this was the extended one, because the bills were out late.
Okay.
So it was due the 12th.
The, the only thing I'm willing to do at this time is if she can show us documentation that money was taken from her checking account in a timely fashion to satisfy it, and then we can see that it was re-deposited, then maybe we can consider it. I'm not willing to take any action tonight to say yea or nay, because we don't have enough information from this. I'm willing to, I'm willing to have, let's go back to the woman and say, give us, show us the documentation that you referenced in the email to camp, and then we'll take another look at it.
When was this due? Again, I'm sorry?
September 12th.
It was extended.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if you're saying that this is gonna, then, then.
Well, the question's gonna be, is the next time someone does one things electronically and it's three days later, you're gonna waive the interest?
And that's gonna be a nightmare.
Should it?
Yeah, and that's gonna be a nightmare for the tax office.
Absolutely.
Okay, then maybe we should just say no.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem asking the question, just to go down that path, but.
Well, I mean, you know, you referenced the other ones we've looked at and rejected, and I think we rejected them for a reason. I'm, I'm willing to give her the benefit of the doubt as a resident, especially if she's never done this before, if it's never happened. Give us the documentation that proves what it is she's saying, because right now, the two pieces of paper I have in front of me don't show me that.
All right.
But I'm most willing to take, you know, I don't wanna take money from a resident.
Follow up with you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and the other thing is the, you know, the end user license agreement that the bank makes you click I've read, and I understand, it may or may not say they're not responsible for lost checks or whatever, and, you know, that's unfortunate.
Maybe you should reconsider the process about you paying.
Yeah.
You know, I, I have personal experience today with the bank that was supposed to be taking money out for a student loan for my daughter, that we had to set up an account in order to do it, set up the account, everything's good. They never bothered to take the money out when it's at your late.
And, and, and the other part of it is to.
You're supposed to take the money, it's your bank.
The recourse for her may be with the bank.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if.
And that could be.
Yeah.
So you see with documentation, and if you can't provide sufficient evidence, then we say, go back to the bank, because the bank's issued.
Just to play devil's advocate, even with the documentation, are you still willing to waive? Are you just gonna lead her on?
No, no, we're willing to take a look at it. I, I mean, I, I'm not speaking with anybody else. I'm willing to take a look at it, provide, to see what the documentation shows us. Right now, the papers, the, the information in front of me doesn't allow me to make an informed decision.
No, I understand that, I just think we're leading her on for another two weeks and then we're gonna say, oh, too bad.
That's a good point, because if, if we all say, eh, even if it says that it's really the bank, she should go to the bank.
I'm sure that's.
Maybe we shouldn't, maybe we shouldn't ask for more documentation.
I think whoever communicates it to her, if you are gonna give her the opportunity for providing the documentation, it should be clear that if, even though she's providing this documentation, it's, it is still being, it's not, it's not any type of decision that is going forward, it's just that they wanna review the additional documentation.
I don't see why we have to say that, we're not making a decision on that right now.
I know, but they're worried, they're worried about her being misled.
We're not misleading her. She says she would provide documentation. The documentation isn't here. So if she has documentation, let her provide it. We're, we're willing to give her the chance. I'm not willing to lead her on for two weeks. I'm not saying that the documentation either satisfies it or doesn't satisfy it, but what I have right now, I'm just trying to give the benefit of the doubt. In other words, I don't think, and I understand your point, Jeff, about opening up a can of worms, but I don't think we ought to be necessarily taking people's money if we, if, if the bank was at fault or somebody other than the resident, that's all. I mean, if she says the money was shown on August 24th and the bill was due the 12th, what the hell happened between, in those eighteen?
And apparently she was conscientious to get it sent at that early, even also.
That, well, that's what kinda caught my eye, because I try and pay my bills seven days before you do it, to give the post office and anybody else a chance to.
Yeah, so, I, so, you know, I, I think that, that maybe you can say to her that with the information we were presented, we weren't inclined to do it. If she'd like to present the additional information she talked about, we would review it. But, you know, we were at this point not inclined to do it, based on the information we received.
We, we're, all we're doing is saying what her email to you can say, is she's willing to provide more documentation. Say what we had before us tonight didn't satisfy anybody.
I'm fine with that.
All right.
Okay, all right, it's picture time. Jeff is going to review, this is, by the way, this is some exciting reading. All right, it's all exciting. Jeff, I'm gonna ask you to review this and tell us what all the numbers mean.
Yeah, they are. Mystery excitement, Jeff Hatcher.
All right, Delran is a member of the Bronson County Insurance Fund, and as a result of that, with twenty-six, or twenty-five other towns, we, we are in charge of our own insurance and managing it, and therefore, we wanna make sure that all the towns participate and are knowledgeable about where they stand, so they asked us to report back to our councils and let them know what's going on, so just wanna give you a quarterly update of where the claims histories are on the Bronson County Joint Insurance Fund, and the first area of claims is the six-year cumulative MEL loss ratio, which is 1.4%, which is outstanding. The MEL covers those claims that are in excess of $300,000 and.
That's awesome.
We basically have had zero to, very, very small claims. The second area quarterly is the EPL Employment Practice Liability and the Public Officials Liability. As you can see, in the last six years, we've never had a claim, so again, outstanding performance in that area. The MEL probably beats us. Then we get to the JIF, which covers the $300,000 and below, and not so good. Our claim history for the last six years has been 106%, which means we're a taker, we're taking more money out than we're giving. However, the good news is, and we've talked about this before, is the last two years have been trending very well. 2015 was 29.6% and 2016 was 4.6%, so if things keep trending in that direction, we'll, we seem to be bouncing back. We've had some employees who had some significant workers' comp injuries, some of them are no longer working with the township, so there should be a reduction in that area, and sometimes, some of you just can't, you can't really control somebody and then police, you know, pursue damages, and me or a guy has a lower back injury. I mean, there's certain things you can do with training, and we're very involved with that, with this joint insurance fund and many programs, but some things are out of your control and you have a tendency to have a couple of years where, we call it being in the box, we had a couple of years in the box where we were the town having different, difficult claims. Yes?
Can they ask you to leave, Jeff, if you have, like, you know, these high?
Um, they've never asked a town to leave. What, what they would do is, there's two things they would do, is number one, your assessment would go up higher, and we do that. Actually, I'm, I've been the finance committee chairman for every year of the JIF, I don't know, twenty-five years. What we'll do is the towns that have higher ratios in terms of claims will get slightly higher. However, one of the things with the JIF is that we do wanna share risk to some degree. It's not like, okay, Delran had a valid ban year, so let's knock them. It's, it's kind of mitigated through the other towns, but the towns having the bad claims are gonna get hit harder. But the other thing is that we set up a program where, and we haven't fallen into that, that area, but we've set up a program where you would take on, the town would take on more risk. They would basically say that if, that if the claims for the next couple of years were again above, you know, 100, 100% or so, that we would be putting up additional funds that we would end up having to give to them to cover our excess. We haven't been in that position as bad as that looks for a couple of years. Our other claims histories and our, we haven't, we haven't been one of the towns that's in that area. And based on the last two years, we won't be, because it's trending the other way.
I was gonna say, the last two years are fantastic.
So, that's just to bring everybody's, we, we also, just for your information, we introduced our budget. I used that, the JIF budget, and it's about a flat budget. In fact, I've got the numbers in our, our line item for the JIF MEL whole package, again, won't be going up. We'll be using, like we have, when the dividend comes in, which is for Delran's, about $61,000, we're recommending put the dividend against next year's premium. We've done that every year, and we also, from past years, where we had some really nice returns, had almost $90,000 in an additional fund that we can use. We'll pull some of that up so that we're flat or have a reduction depending, you know, we'll give you those options when we go to put the budget together, but at the worst, it would be probably a flat number where it's the same as last year, which it's been the same for almost three or four years.
Could you do me a favor to reach out to each of the department heads and let them know that, let their, their employees know that they do a fantastic job?
Yeah, we, we actually do that in some of the meetings with terms of the safety meetings.
I mean, seriously, I want, let them know the mayor and council really recognize how, how well they've done, so at least they understand and we appreciate it.
That's a lot of where some of these things come from, too, with the safety meetings, and there's a, for those of you that attended the MEL, they, the MEL summer down at the lake, I mean, they touch base on some of them, some of the programs that they brought in, but the number of programs that they have in addition just to providing insurance is ten times what towns had before when we were under commercial insurance, which basically, the broker showed up once a year and said, you know, here's your rate, here's your increase this year, and see you later. So, I mean, we've got everything from a, a library of, not videotapes, but I guess this, at this point, things along those lines and training, and they have specific training programs for almost every kind of area that you can imagine that hits, that hits towns, so, and we do touch base on all of these things when we have the monthly JIF safety meetings internal. That's it. Unless there are any questions.
Now, I knew you'd make it exciting. Council, thank you very much. Such an exciting topic.
It is, it did crunch those numbers, man. Now, it's, by the way, when I piggyback, I was the first chairman of the JIF twenty-five years ago, and, and when we went in to create the joint insurance fund, I was talking to somebody in the meeting and I said, "I would wanna do anything but this for a living. I have no interest in this whatsoever," and then they made me the chairman.
And have it like self-sense, like.
Careful what you ask, or what you do.
Okay, so next we have the 2900 Route 130 North. So this is four units with one account. We're looking to split this into four accounts, four meters.
And that's similar one, two months ago.
Yeah.
This is the one with the, those users. This is, this is one that's on one billing currently, but it actually has four separate water meter readings that we get in, and it's really just to clear it up on the, it's one that we get an hour reading on, like, when you get the reporting from New Jersey Department of Water every year, we get an hour on the three others, because there's nowhere for those readings to go. So to clear that up, if we split the reading, it's not gonna change their billing in any way, but if we just split it out, those readings would have a place to go and it would clear up that error report.
This is the week coming through?
Yeah.
This is a no-brainer to me.
They'll get four bills instead of one, but other than that, it's really not gonna be any adjustments to their billing.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, they'll just help us get that cleared up.
We good? Right, this makes sense. Anybody have any objections?
No.
So we're just thinking, where was the Cumberland Farms? I'm thinking of.
That's a song.
Chestnut Hill Drive, Chestnut Hill Drive, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's like.
Right, with the Primos.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cross from Aaron's. It's, it's a little Delran.
I remember Cumberland Farms.
I do.
Yeah, yeah, I do now, yeah.
Now, it'd be video form.
Actually, the address is actually similar to that thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, right on the border.
Was, Brown Stuhler was there for a while.
Yeah, actually, that's a similar thing.
Yeah. Where they got the big lottery ticket at. I don't realize, okay, they had a couple of them.
Okay, so, so the reorg, there's no one that is new, so, I mean, do, what do we, don't we usually just do it at the first public meeting? It's, it's the second of January anyway. I don't wanna do it New Year's Day.
Yeah, so our regular meeting, all January 2nd, our regular public, if we were to continue with our regular schedule, it could be, it'll be January 2nd, so if we wanna do a reorg.
January 2nd?
January 2nd at 6:30, 6:45.
Yeah. I mean, unless somebody wants to come in New Year's Day.
No.
No.
I don't.
There's no reason, there's no reason why you could.
Joy, joy, I'm sorry, I was just.
Listen.
And, and if, and if, if there is a change or something, you could just do it for January 2nd and continue, right? Doesn't, just because January 1st is already passed for the new year, right, January 2nd.
Yeah, we just, it has to be within the first week. We have to be within the first week.
And, and we'll be done.
Guess what, if you don't do it in the first week, then we don't do anything.
Yeah.
I thought all of a sudden you gotta do it then, because I was in a town where they're going to 13.
So that's fine, so law schedule for January 2nd at 6:30?
6:30 with the reorg and then that's seven, the regular public.
Okay, and we have two new police officers, two spare in at the 7:00.
Awesome. That's excellent. Okay.
You give us the information, you have us, I don't know. Oh, you do now?
They've already been appointed, we just have to, Delton is the academy, do you know when they finish the academy? When they graduate?
We need to do two.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we were holding the meeting on the 2nd, so I remember.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the WWTP. That, that's not a wrestling organization. And it looked like, Jim, you're, you're saying that we could save some money by, is that Jim or Jim?
Yeah, it's optimistic. So the flood maps right now show it's flood elevation 11 in that area, and it's actually being changed to 10 with the new maps that are coming out. And right now, you're paying flood insurance, and that insurance is based on a flood zone that each building is, you know, main floor is within the flood hazard area, or flood, within the flood of Howard's elevation. But looking at the design plans, these elevations are above the existing flood elevation, and there are four of them, or at least three of them, and then the fourth one, the big ticket one, you know, with the change to the flood maps, it's actually, that would be pulled out of the flood hazard area. So if the elevation certificate confirms that the elevations of these structures are above the flood hazard elevation, especially the new ones being adopted, then your rates, your premiums will drop significantly. These are yearly, they're yearly, so the cost for this certificate could be paid for, you know, even if you get, you know, a couple of the smaller ones shown to be outside of flood elevation, it'll pay for itself within a year or two. If not, more.
Yeah, so savings.
The big one is the sludge processing building. If we can show that that's above elevation 10, then you would simply process that through FEMA, it's a no, no fee application, and you sit, hand that to your insurance provider, and they already give you a quote, these numbers are based on actual quotes from the, but.
You're guaranteeing us that much money.
Can't guarantee you.
It's potential.
I know, that's what I'm saying, well.
They can't guarantee you that the elevation certificate, we're looking at the design plans for the city, and the, and the, and the design elevations, as long as they were built in accordance with those elevations, it should be good. And you have, for four of the structures, you have about twelve, two feet to work with, so.
Jim, why does the number go down? I mean, you hear all this stuff.
Well, we, honestly, we, we thought you should do the elevation certificate before we even knew that the flood elevation was going down, when it was still, it's still at 11.
Right.
It's going down to 10 based on the updated studies that FEMA did to prepare the new master protocol. And these are major studies that have been, been, been conducted over the last, you know, five, how many years?
Right.
You know, the, the information's just better now, you know, they have better.
Oh, okay.
You know, better math, better computers, better data, better aerial data, with all the, pile of that, and.
You know, but you hear all these stories about sea level rise, you'd think it would go the other way, but obviously, they're relying on science, which is a good thing.
Well, since you're guaranteeing at least the sludge, I'll go back and we should do it.
I, is there, is there, I forget, is there a cost within $5,000 to save?
Potentially up to $13,000 a year.
Per year.
Per year. We're, we're estimating between $2,000 and $13,000 a year, so even it's only, even, what I'm saying is, even if we only get one of them to show that's above, all the ones, there's two of them, two of the buildings, the control building and generate building, you're not really, you're paying the same general, same general rate that it's at the AED zone or X zone, but the remaining three, if we can get the two or smaller ones, when I say smaller, the smaller rate you're paying, we'll save about $2, $2,500 a year. You know, if you can just get one of them. If you get both of them, it's $5,000 a year. If you get all three of those, it's about, you know, $13,000 a year.
Feels like a sound investment to me.
Jim, how often do they do the evaluations? Is that on the schedule?
Flood maps?
Yeah.
Oh, decades.
Oh, so in other words, if they did this. It would be a long.
You're not, you're not gonna see them redo it by the 10th of August. They might, and they might do an interim, interim update, but usually, it's not as broad scale as what they're doing now. Right now, they're just doing a complete.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you got it right there, 94, 94.
Yeah, and 94 was a minor adjustment to the 77 map. They originally reduced it to 77.
Wow, you, you, do you have a fairly high level of confidence that we'll do pretty good with it?
Confidence is high.
Not guaranteed.
Not guaranteed.
I'm just asking.
No, I do, I, I, you know, I, the surveyors in my, my office, even other than Jerry, everyone's like, it's a no brainer.
One gamble, that $5,000 fee on it.
$5,000, dude, just trip, will you, buddy?
Feel lucky, man.
I don't know, I need you down at the AC.
Exactly.
So, so are we good to, to, kind of used to do this?
Yeah.
Do we have to do anything to memorialize that intention?
You really don't, because it's in the line item, I just wanted to get direction from you. You have it in this year's line item, so if you're gonna start this year.
It'd be misleading, same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do it, we'll, we'll find the other one.
All right, sounds good. All right, so before we go on, we also, we also talked about, and I wanted to, you may have received an email on Monday, I'm sure you received an email on Monday, that I wanted to authorize Jim to prepare the RFP or the RMQ, RFP I guess, for the energy conservation for the sewer, sewer department, the electronic consumption optimizing equipment that we've been talking about for a long, long time, and we decided. been talking about for a long, long time, and we decided to do it, and it's, it was set as a supplement on Monday. Jim has prepared the estimates for the costs, and this has a guaranteed savings, and we've gone through this ad nauseam, but we haven't, we haven't actually authorized him to put together the, the RFP, so I'd like to ask counsel to. You remember that the Adirondack company was the company that presented?
Yeah.
They were here three or four times, did several reviews. Yeah.
Yeah, you, you'd be authorized, it's just, just to put out the RFP, to get an actual proposal, so you're not actually spending any of the body just on us to do the administrative work to put the RFP out there. So eventually, they'll come back with a cost proposal to you, which then you'll have to authorize while entering through contract.
The RFP is going out to everybody.
So it would go out to any potential vendor that can meet the specifications of the RFP.
Right, so they're.
Anybody can buy them, and if they can satisfy the requirements of the RFP.
And we budgeted for this project.
Yeah, I sat through a presentation when I was elected.
It's been a while.
I think it's been.
Yes.
So.
So do we need to, Patty, you look concerned?
No, 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 no. I mean, we haven't agreed to have them do.
We haven't agreed to have them do it, but we did, we did put it in the capital budget that we were going to do it.
Either with them or someone else.
Right, like, someone else has a better deal, you know, we've kind of, this has gone round and round for several years, and we finally, this year, decided to do it. You know, I, I don't, I'm not going to rehash all that. So, let me do the same thing, just say okay? Is it, wasn't this in the budget?
The, the actual contract to do the capital work is in the budget. What, because we have a couple of numbers from you in terms of what the.
Which one is that?
The RFP is going to cost.
What's it? The engineering budget was 10 grand.
Oh, that was through, that was for the entire construction administration.
Right.
There's an early one of 5,000 for, just for the RFP.
You have, you have 5,000 for an RFP.
Right, so, I mean, obviously, if we don't, we don't engage them or someone else, then we're not going to pay the other five.
Right.
Because there'd be no project to engineer. Yeah, this was sent out Monday.
It, it's, that's hourly too, it's not like a guaranteed spend of 5,000.
Right.
Same thing with the survey.
Do we open a copy of that?
Yeah, we just mailed out, Jeff mailed it out, emailed it out.
Yeah, I'm trying to open the email right now.
All right.
You can have one copy. Everybody gets that. Put it out, and.
That's the one, that was that one from a while ago, where we, we used to establish a budget for it.
Correct, right.
Yeah, we read that.
Right, we, we've talked about this.
Dude, the numbers haven't changed.
Right. Yeah, that's, right. It's a guaranteed thing.
It's a guaranteed thing, but I think we should go out, the bid.
Absolutely.
We are, we're, we want to authorize, just putting it out to bid.
Yeah, you're not authorizing a specific agenda right now.
Correct.
You're just asking for a form of proposal, which you can then determine whether or not.
Those figures are, for the meeting, we have the 2016.
August 18, 2016.
Yeah. Like, nothing's changed.
No.
No, I just, I just have some.
This has been dragging and dragging and dragging, and if their predictions are correct, we would have been making money by now.
No, I'm okay with the whole concept, but at the same time, you know, I, I don't know how I feel with the firm, that's all. And I'll, the rest of it, I have to address.
Okay.
Let's see who bids anyway.
Right, let's get in the bid.
Right.
Go from there.
We'd need a motion and vote.
And what?
And vote.
Okay, so, I'd like a motion to put the energy saving out to bid, Jim to prepare the, the request for proposals for the energy saving for the sewer department, for about, approximately cost of $5,000 or less.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Mr. Morell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flot?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Let's go to our reports.
Before we go to reports, did we get a number for that resolution?
I thought it was just a motion. It was just to advertise the bids.
Motion advertised, we need a resolution to advertise for, to prepare the.
A motion is fine.
I, I don't know, that's, that, you're the, you're the lawyer.
I, I, I think we can proceed with the motions, given that we're not obligated, well.
We're, we're obligated to spend money with the township engineer to prepare a request or proposal.
Yeah.
Want to do a resolution?
Yeah, let's throw a resolution.
I, I don't want you to feel uncomfortable. So, can we try that again? You want to give me a number?
Do the resolution, just authorizing the engineer and services then.
Okay.
For the, right, for the, for preparation, because the, the motion will cover the advertisement, right? Or not.
Let's redo it all as a one resolution.
So, give me a number. So the motion is to authorize the engineer for up to $5,000 to put an RFP together for the power management system, and to authorize the RFP to be created.
Correct.
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 So moved. That's an excellent approach.
Second.
Mr. Morell?
Aye.
Mrs. Flot? Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Okay, now we'll go to reports. Chief, you have anything for us tonight? Yes, there must be no football on tonight, that's why you came out, is that, okay. Jamie, anything for us?
Nothing.
Jeff?
Nothing for public.
Nothing for public. Jim?
Nothing new necessarily to update, just the road program and the sidewalks are just working on punch list items, but the work is generally.
Okay, and you're working on the new roads lists?
Oh, working on the new roads lists, yeah, we're, we're going to have this on for tonight, but the core is really about half done so far, so we're putting pressure on the core and company to get us a report by the end of this week, so we can evaluate that data and come back with better refined cost estimates.
Great.
And for the talk.
Maybe you can estimate the weather wasn't nice enough for the.
Oh, it's nice.
You know, we're lucking out with all this. Thanks. Brian, anything for us?
Nothing for public.
Okay. Dan, anything for us tonight?
Yes, I was happy to attend on Sunday, along with the mayor and other council members, the grand opening, I guess, of Pets Plus in conjunction with the Humane Society, and we'll no longer be using puppies for adoption from puppy mills, and I think it's a great idea. We, we got to see some of the dogs there. I think the mayor's, I think the mayor's mother and father ended up with a cute puppy. It was a nice event, and it was nice of the Humane Society to reach out to us and, and have a business like that doing business that way. And that's it.
Now, in conjunction with what Dan brought up, you know, that we've, we've been lobbied to pass an ordinance that says that we can't, that we can't sell anything but rescues, you can't sell puppies from puppy mills in Delran. So we have two pet stores currently, one doesn't sell dogs, and one obviously just went to a puppy mill free program. Is that something that we would get in trouble by doing that, or can we pass?
Did you send them the, the ordinance that they're trying to propose?
I said it to anybody, it's going to be.
No, no.
You said to have it on the agenda for the 12.
Right, remember we talked about sending this, was, did, did you get it?
I have not seen it, maybe it went to Doug, it hasn't gotten me yet.
We did provide it to Brian to review and to make sure that he was okay with the, the ordinance before we even addressed it at the council meeting. We have it scheduled for the.
So, I think that's what I was saying, but.
No, it works. It works.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
We've, we've already received this months ago, and I think Tim already prepared a memo on it.
Okay. It is familiar, I think you're right.
So.
Well, it's, it's a different, it's a different ordinance.
It's the same one.
I'll forward it to you tomorrow with, and I'll forward to Tim's memo.
So, I, I.
Because I, I.
So, you know, just, just even if it's just.
With the change in the Pets Plus, I think it might change things.
Right, so.
It's the last time you have concerns.
So, you know, we just want to make sure that we're not, we're not opening ourselves up to litigation by somebody saying, hey, I want to sell puppies from puppy mills, and, and you can't stop me from doing commerce or whatever.
I will review, I'll let you know, my, that's my concern as well, particularly in this instance where the two pet stores are already, would be in compliance anyway.
Right, well, we just look at the future.
And, and they knew that you were reviewing it, they even recommended that our solicitor reviewed it.
Okay.
To make sure that we're, everything's okay, where we can't consume, apparently, there were a couple of cases where the people did try, and apparently, it didn't go anywhere. So I need you to look into it well and come back with whatever you feel.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know what state statute would authorize this, so it's something I need to get looked into.
Okay, and, and review Tim's response, because he may have already done that work.
Well, dude.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Yes.
Tyler, what do you have for us?
Yeah, just the, a little marketing for the winter festival.
I was going to say, anything going on Friday?
Yeah, big, big day Friday. I want to thank Jeff and Barry for helping us get the tree up, is there, plan that they put the lights on today, so we're still working till we'll be there. Friday at 6:00, and Santa comes at 7 o'clock sharp, so.
And what else do you have going?
There's a ton of stuff going, so we have pictures with Santa, Gary, you're going to be handling that.
Not Santa.
We have three food trucks there, a grain truck, soft pretzels, as well as Dunkin' Donuts will be out there as well. I know Joe's trying to get in touch with Ellen M. for cookies as well. There's a lot of moving parts, but it's coming together well, and the scouts are preparing a bonfire as well, so it should be, should be a good event, yeah.
So it's not.
And Calvary Church is doing games, doing all the games and prizes for the kids, so.
Well, let's hope it's at least cool enough that a bonfire will feel good, and people won't go, man, it's too hot for the bonfire tonight.
Well, we could bring the palm trees. May a little more atmosphere.
It's not your report yet, Patty. All right, and now, with reporting on the palm trees.
I like them.
What do you got?
Nothing, nothing to know.
I'll have Jerry deliver them to your house tomorrow.
So, I have one thing in my report, and it's kind of serious. It was brought to my attention by a resident who I asked to send me a, an email kind of explaining the situation, and it's something that's kind of new and a burgeoning problem, and it impacts Delran, so let me just, let me just cut to the chase and read, we're just going to call this gentleman Eric, and he sends a letter starting with, my fellow Delranians, if you haven't heard or are not aware, are yet aware of the new legal high trend called kratom, that you probably aren't aware that it's killed 36 people, it's highly addictive, and that it's legal, and anyone can buy it, or that it's sold in two stores in Delran. Kratom's, K-R-A-T-O-M, is a tree-like plant from Southeast Asia, it binds to certain opioid receptors of the brain, creating an opioid-like experience. Using kratom once can last, last a user up to six hours, and stopping kratom after a period of daily use causes withdrawal, which includes symptoms like depression, anxiety, fatigue, restless leg syndrome, insomnia, and drug cravings that may last up to two weeks in length. I am a testimony to kratom's hidden dangers. I went to graduating high school in the summer of 2013, I discovered kratom, and I was hooked from the first time I used it. At the time, I didn't know as much about the drug as I do now, I don't know if I wanted to stop. I, I didn't know that if I wanted to stop, I would have to go through intense withdrawals, which for me were crying spells, along with bursts of depression that lingered for two or more weeks, body fatigue, watery eyes, and occasionally, I felt a scary heart abnormality, where I'd feel my heart thrust and empty, an extra beat, and severe insomnia that lasted over a week. Kratom stole a part of my life because it numbed me out. It took me a long time before I noticed that being numb all the time was destroying my creativity, my character, who I was and who I wanted to be. Committing to stop once and for all was hard, plenty of times, I reused and fell in love with the feeling all over again. Eventually, the benefits of being off the drug weighed more than the benefits of using the drug. I'm here today with my head high, held high with a message of concern, I truly believe that kratom is a gateway drug to actual opioids. A lot of times when I used kratom, I would chase the high, and that attribute alone could have taken me outside the realm of just using kratom. Now you have my story, I urge you to take action, sincerely, Eric. So, it is, it is available in two stores in Delran.
Called kratom?
Kratom, K-R-A-T-O-M. I'm not sure if that's the formulation.
It is the chief.
I will. And I, you know, with a, with a quick Google search, found that it, you know, there is an, I put it in my Google alerts, so I'm getting articles from around the country saying that it is, you know, people are getting hooked on this, and it's one of those that kind of slipped through the cracks. I will tell you that I, I reached out to Assemblyman Conaway and asked him, since he is a doctor and is involved in the, in the, I forget what committee, he's in the health and.
Health committee.
Health committee. And he is going to immediately look into this as a new potential problem for us, but I thought it was brave of this gentleman to bring it to my attention, and I told him, he said, please don't use my last name, and I, I will not, but it was, it was something that, I'd never heard of it up until, you know, a couple of days ago, when he first contacted me.
Do they, what is it sold to be used for? Like, what do they say it's to be?
You know, it's a supplement, or. Supplement, or a.
Oh, my hands, this boy's mentioning it here.
Uh, he, he advised, he advised me in a, in a separate text. Um, I don't know whether we want to say that or not.
Interesting.
I will let you know, but it's two that, uh, are in town. Uh, and not necessarily, you know, I know what we're all thinking, what kind of a store would have it, but there's one that I was surprised. So, so, that's something, you know, I remember when they first started talking about crack, and I went, what kind of a stupid name is that for a drug? And then all of a sudden, bam, so we're kind of on the cutting edge of this. I don't know whether, so, really, question, Brian, is, are, are we allowed to outlaw that as a health and safety issue?
Potentially, that's something I would need to research.
You know, that, I know that we can't, we're not the FDA, and we're not whatever, but maybe if we saw an immediate concern uh, for our, for the health and safety of Delran residents, if we were able to do that. But I, I have a funny feeling the state's gonna jump in on this, because, you know, when these things, these gateways come in, you gotta, you gotta find out.
Why don't we let, uh, you're with the prosecutor's office on this.
Okay, that'd be great, uh, because it's not illegal, but, you know, right now, it's not illegal, but it certainly, it is what it is.
Do we know the two stores that are selling?
We do.
Brian, would we be able to go to them and just say, as a, we've kind of reported this, would you think about? Because, you know, to your point about the Assemblyman Conaway, it's gonna take a while to, one, going through the legislature and get signed.
Right.
If this stuff is being sold now, is, is it feasible where we could go and just suggest to these two stores, hey, you think there's a problem with this, and we'd appreciate it if you.
Stop selling it?
Stop selling it.
Don't you think that the police should?
Well, no, no, I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm, you're absolutely right, I agree. I have been told. He's going, he's going to say, yeah, yeah. Who will she go and talk?
Are you saying?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna get all the results. Yeah. I'm gonna get the next.
Okay.
I mean, it wouldn't carry any legal weight, it's only a request, so I don't necessarily see anything that would prohibit that request from being.
But if they're selling a lot of it, they're making money.
Oh, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but I think that we, that, that story that Gary told us is pretty compelling. I think if we told that to an owner, maybe they would take that into consideration, and, uh.
Let's see, Brian says, you know.
Yeah, let's see, you know.
We'll drive to, yeah.
Let's do kind of a, oh, you know, a multi-pronged approach, if we can.
Yep.
Maybe let it stop it here, uh, I'm sure it won't stop it anywhere else, but at least here, they can't get it here, and if the state can stop it, um, you know, maybe then this young man will, uh, will have made a good move, so, uh, thank you for indulging me in reading that into the record. Uh, and that's my report. Can you have anything for us?
Yeah, I got two things. Um, I read, I was with the seniors tonight, uh, there was the change of order, uh, the president's dropping out, we make sure that the, um, it's still going forward, um, there will be a new president, vice president, the old ones are pretty much still in place. Um, if anybody's planning to go to their senior party, it is, uh, the amendment. They just let them know, they wanna know, so make sure you contact them, let them know what your, your plans are, and the other thing is, I, we're gonna be starting, I guess, the budget this, this month, so we'll be going through each department and going, going again. Again, so, other than that.